All right, Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Roll call please. Mrs. Bottalato, Mr. Iftikhar, Mr. Pico, Mr. Velardo, Mr. Yagnam, Mrs. Bottalato, Mr. Iftikhar, Mr. Pico, Mr. Velardo, Mr. Yagnam,
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Harold, Mrs. Sharfstein, we have a call. Mrs. Harold, Mrs. Sharfstein, we have a call.
This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance that in compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey has caused this notice has caused this notice to be posted at the Office of the Stanhope Board of Education, to be posted at the Office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. The Stanhope School District in partnership with the community commits to provide The Stanhope School District in partnership with the community commits to provide a quality, a quality, comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, and globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better teacher. and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better teacher. An executive session will be held tonight for the purpose of student confidentiality and personnel. An executive session will be held tonight for the purpose of student confidentiality and personnel. Formal action may be taken. They are on to presentations. Formal action may be taken. They are on to presentations.
Okay, thank you. As we do every year, multiple times a year, Okay, thank you. As we do every year, multiple times a year, I would like to report on our district and school grade for the HIB self-assessment. I would like to report on our district and school grade for the HIB self-assessment. So just briefly on the process, at the end of every school year, So just briefly on the process, at the end of every school year, we take the resources that we've used in order to train our staff, we take the resources that we've used in order to train our staff, educate our students, follow HIB laws, conduct investigations, report out to parents, educate our students, follow HIB laws, conduct investigations, report out to parents, and we score ourselves on the practice involving all of those activities. and we score ourselves on the practice involving all of those activities. We then submit our self-assessment score, what we believe our score should be, We then submit our self-assessment score, what we believe our score should be, and then at the end of the following year, the state comes back and they typically affirm and then at the end of the following year, the state comes back and they typically affirm the score that we provided. So when we submitted the self-assessment, the score that we provided. So when we submitted the self-assessment, I shared that we, for the 23-24 school year, we scored at 77 points out of 78 points, I shared that we, for the 23-24 school year, we scored at 77 points out of 78 points, and we had an official release within the last month where the DOE confirmed and we had an official release within the last month where the DOE confirmed that that in fact that that in fact is our official score. It's not our self-assessment score anymore. is our official score. It's not our self-assessment score anymore. So we are required to post this onto our website. It already has been posted. So we are required to post this onto our website. It already has been posted. And again, it goes through the core elements that are rated are HIB programs, approaches And again, it goes through the core elements that are rated are HIB programs, approaches or other initiatives, training on the board approves HIB policy, or other initiatives, training on the board approves HIB policy, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIB other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIB and related information and skills, HIB personnel, school-level HIB incident reporting procedures, and related information and skills, HIB personnel, school-level HIB incident reporting procedures, HIB investigation procedures, and HIB reporting. Anybody have any questions? HIB investigation procedures, and HIB reporting. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So the second presentation I have, and I added late Okay, excellent. So the second presentation I have, and I added late because we weren't sure whether or not it was going to get done in time. because we weren't sure whether or not it was going to get done in time. Some of you may be aware that we have a small group of middle school students Some of you may be aware that we have a small group of middle school students who entered into a Hate the Hate competition where they were to create something who entered into a Hate the Hate competition where they were to create something to demonstrate the school's beliefs, efforts, initiatives against hatred in general, right? to demonstrate the school's beliefs, efforts, initiatives against hatred in general, right? Hatred because of race, because of religion, because of anything under the sun. Hatred because of race, because of religion, because of anything under the sun. And this group of students utilized our broadcasting studio to create a four-part podcast, And this group of students utilized our broadcasting studio to create a four-part podcast, and they wanted to come present to the board and share their journey, and they wanted to come present to the board and share their journey, what they created, and why they did it. And then they realized that the board meeting what they created, and why they did it. And then they realized that the board meeting was after school was released, and they decided, let's just prepare a video for you instead was after school was released, and they decided, let's just prepare a video for you instead because they didn't want to come back to school, understandably. because they didn't want to come back to school, understandably. So I don't want to get too much into what they were doing because I think that they're So I don't want to get too much into what they were doing because I think that they're going to go through it in the video, but Mr. Llama queued it up for us if you don't mind getting us started. going to go through it in the video, but Mr. Llama queued it up for us if you don't mind getting us started.
Hello, we are the Hate the Hate Podcast Group. Today we would like to present a presentation for our Board of Ed, but first, let's introduce ourselves.
I'm Jack.
I'm Ethan.
I'm Elizabeth.
I'm Elizabeth.
And I'm Kate.
We are missing some members who are a part of Hate the Hate such as Kajuna Niketuck, Scarlett Santos, and Seegun Raps.
This podcast was made for the No Hate in the Garden State competition. The way we started this podcast is we got all together and we discussed ideas and thought of what the students would want and what could make an impact in our great garden state. That's when we came up with the idea to make a podcast.
When we started working on Hate the Hate, it was very hard. We didn't know how to start it. We were confused and lost until we all got together and started writing scripts, making ideas, meeting up every time we were free, and when we started, we just kept going.
We had to think of ways to compromise, so everybody felt included in such a hard but amazing thing.
But all of the mistakes we made, all of the scripts we wrote, every time we messed up on a recording, it got us to the end.
Although we didn't win, we don't regret moments we had with each other. Sometimes when working on the podcast, we had some issues, but even those moments were worth it. Win or lose, we believe we did a great job, and all of the work made us stronger.
So for anyone interested in listening in on their podcast, if you go to our website, right on News and Announcements, there's a post. If you click on that, you can either listen on Spotify, and I believe it's also posted to our YouTube channel. Is that correct, Nick? It is not? Okay, so Spotify works, I know, because I tested it out this morning. And there's also a spot, if you scroll down to Students, there's also a link for the Hate the Hate podcast. So it was four episodes, really nicely done. They did interviews. And like they said, although they didn't win, it was a really nice opportunity for them to work together, use our technology, and spread some good word.
Great, thank you. One item for correspondence from the New Jersey Department of Education, Division of Early Childhood Services. Questions, comments on that? Okay, that would bring us to executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231 of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and State of New Jersey that a closed session of the Board of Education where the public shall be excluded will be held at this time for the purpose of student confidentiality and personnel. Be it further resolved that the action of the Board with regard to the above entitled matters shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. Can I have a voice vote, please, to enter executive session? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any noes, abstentions? Okay.
All right, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right, so we had one confirmed H I B since we last met and one student served two days of in-school suspension. I wanted to take a moment to thank Mrs. Procarpio again for her monthly, the flowers that she puts monthly into the entranceway. I don't know whether or not that's something that's going to continue next year. Congratulations to the Procarpio family. They've now had both of their children graduate from Valley Road School successfully and, you know, we wish them well. But I want to thank her for all the years of doing that while she was serving on the Board of Education and then even after. We had two very successful field days. Our elementary was held on Wednesday, June 11th, our middle school on Thursday, June 12th. Both of these were held on early dismissal days, which is something that was new. One of the things that was nice is that they were on days when all of the academic expectations were done. Teachers didn't have to worry about finishing up tests and doing grades. It was just really, it was very loose, right? It was, it was an opportunity to have fun and compete and the kids really seemed to have a good time with it. Special thanks to the HSA for all the help that they did. Mrs. Yo to, for creating all the T-shirts for the kids. Looked really cool seeing them all in unison out there. And Machios for putting it together a nice barbecue lunch for the kids on their field day. We had four teams compete in the Battle of the Books competition, two sixth grade teams, one of which earned first place, the other earned second place in the competition. And we had two teams consisting of students in seventh and eighth grade, and one of those teams took home second place. So congratulations to them and to Mrs. Fair and Ms. Pfeiffer, who led the Battle of the Books team. Our eighth grade Washington trip was held on May 28th through May 30th. Despite a little rainy weather at the beginning of the trip, it was a great success. All the students behaved, nobody had to get sent home sick. Yeah, enjoyed the tour guide that they had and it was another really nice trip. My intention is to, you know, I know, I know there's always questions about what we're doing next year and years beyond. My intention is to continue with this trip for our eighth grade. I do think that it's something that's, that's important and as long as we can sustain it, I'd like to keep it going. We do have a very small eighth grade class next year. Looks like our last really small class that's in the twenties. So we're going to have to do some work to make sure we get as many as kids as we can to go, but I feel confident that our eighth grade advisors will be able to do that. Congratulations to our concert band for earning a rating of excellent at the Dorney Park adjudication on May 23rd. Kindergarten orientation and preschool orientation were both well-attended and held on June 6th. The end of year activities, we had our administrators and teachers of the day for eighth graders on May 27th. That was a lot of fun, got a lot of great photo opportunities there that, that they showed at the eighth grade, eighth grade graduation. Dinner dance was held on June 4th at the coach room in Hackettstown. Kids had a lot of fun. Honor roll ceremony was held on June 11th. At that ceremony, we honored students who earned honor roll status all four marking periods for the year. And notably, our eighth graders who earned honor roll status all four marking periods for all three of their middle school years, which is really impressive. I think we had seven or eight of them out of our eighth grade class, which is great. Graduation was wonderful on June 13th, although inside we beat the rain. We didn't walk out to a storm, which is what I was concerned about. The air conditioning this year was wonderful, for those of you who attended. Thank you to, to the board members who did attend. It was, it was a really nice celebration of a really great group of kids. And on that same day, the HSA sponsored the middle school barbecue outside where they grilled up some burgers and dogs and salads and candies and cookies and all the other junk that the kids consumed and probably got sick before graduation. But it was, it was tremendous. It's a great opportunity for the kids to get together one last time before summer. And as has been a tradition now for over 10 years, we, we, our entire school and the community clapped out our eighth graders for the last time as they left. So we wish them well, whether it's Lenape, Sussex Tech, anywhere else where they're going, we know that they're going to do great things. Next reminder for our summer board meeting schedule, we do not have any committee meetings scheduled this summer. The only reason we would is if something comes up that's, that's urgent that we need to get together and, and meet, and if that is the case, I'll reach out to you. Otherwise, our July meeting is on July 16th and our August meeting is on August 27th, the week before we return to school. And lastly, the reminder that petitions for the November elections are available on the Sussex County Clerk website, which is linked on the agenda. Any questions?
Hearing none. All right, that would bring us to personnel, curriculum, school climate and culture, but Mr. Velardo is not here. I don't know if you are okay to go over it. I think most of it is reflected on the agenda, but.
I can, I can take a look real quick and see if there's anything that's not reflected on the agenda. Approval of higher professionals, cap tier playground aids. We have the movement of two, two staff members on the guide. One to MA plus 30, the other to BA plus 30. We retroactive approval of Mr. Today as a part-time custodian. And again, approving him for next year. We have a few substitutes.
Yeah, I was pretty sure it's all on the agenda.
It's all there. It's a long one, which is why it took me a minute to get through, but yeah, it's all reflected on the agenda.
So we can go over any questions so that we can get to the agenda if there are any. Okay, that would bring us to business services.
Special thank you to Dan, our BA for this year. Our cap reserve, maintenance reserve is exactly where we want to be at the end of the year, both as higher than it was when we last spoke about it. They started looking into the possibility of addressing some of the parking issues we've had here. So that's in the infancy stage, but I'm happy to hear that they started thinking about it. And then it's summertime, so you got a lot of projects going on. Underground storage tank, science room, all starting soon. Desk and chairs are in order. Hopefully they'll be here before the beginning of next year. And then finally, the courtyard can use some upgrades that I think they're going to be focusing on after the science lab is complete.
Science room demo started today, completely gutted. It's all in the hallways and the underground storage tank. I believe Monday they're coming out to begin that project.
That's it.
Questions? All right, that would bring us to policy and communications.
We had no policy that needed to be reviewed. We did talk about code of conduct being gone through in conjunction with the administration this summer. Mrs. DiCattato is looking to set up a meeting with members in the school as well as the board to go through the code of conduct because it's always good to get a review update and see what needs to be changed, if anything. And this way everybody is aware before the start of the school year. We talked about your evaluation, so that was taken care of there and that was about it.
Okay, Ms. Baldolotto is not here, so we'll skip Ed Services update for this month. And for my board president's report, I only have one item to report, which is as of two days ago, our grant was approved for a regionalization study. So it has not been funded, which means we don't actually have access to the money yet, so the work isn't started yet. But we did get a note from the Department of Education that the grant is approved for the full amount, which is around about $124,000. So what will happen next is we will start to set up meetings and establish a committee if anybody has interest to go through what that process will look like. So we had a committee in the beginning to do the actual application. We'll form a new committee now to do the advisement of what actually happens during the study itself. But like I said, it hasn't actually funded yet, so we don't have anything on the schedule yet, but it was approved. That's what I know.
What are you anticipating in terms of that committee?
How much room? Well, we can't have a quorum, right? So it's, it's going to have to be the superintendent, myself. I don't know if the other schools are going to stick to the board president, the vice president. I don't think they are. It's usually going to be one other board member and then potentially, you know, community member because we want the community engaged as well in driving what the study looks at. And again, this isn't really anything where nothing is, nothing gets formalized. There's no voting attached to any of this. This is just to set up and structure the study, which the Rowan Institute for Policy will come in and they will spearhead the study. If you have interest, let me know. Okay? So that's all I have. That would bring us to public session number one, but seeing as there, there is no public, we will move on. There was one travel and workshop report from Mrs. Harold. And no questions on that. We will move on to the minutes for approval. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
So this is the minutes from the last regular meeting and from the executive sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. Administrative action items one through eight. Can I have a motion, please? Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Take a quick moment there. Anybody have any questions?
Item number two, the approval of the updated framework. This is just me being picky. I don't know if it matters. Page nine still shows that it's reflecting the 2324 school year. And again, that it's not content. It was just, it caught my eye.
I'll take a look at it. We'll get it fixed.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar.
Yes.
Mr. Pico.
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam.
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Personnel action items one through 21, addendum items 22 and 23. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Okay, so this is everything Steve briefly mentioned for the committee meeting. Take a moment, read through. We'll see if anybody has any questions or discussion.
Just mentioned it in executive, but wanted to take a moment to look at number 14 and thank Mrs. Palillo for 14 years of service to the Stand Up School District. She's been a wonderful employee. She will certainly be missed and we, we wish her well with her family and her, and her future endeavors.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Iftikhar.
Yes.
Mr. Pico.
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Harold.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein.
Yes.
Thank you.
Business services, one through 15, addendum, addendum item 16 through 18. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Breakfast and lunch, briefly go over the changes there. I think they were minimal, like five cents, if I recall, number 11.
No change to student breakfast, I don't believe. I think that for students, there was a range of five to 10 cent increases for lunch and milk prices. And I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, if you remember Chris, like a 25 or 30 cent increase for adult lunches.
25. For adult breakfast went up 25 and adult lunch also went up 25.
Yeah, I have it here. Adult breakfast, 25 cents, student lunch, 10 cents. Adult lunch, 25 cent increase and a five cent increase for milk. I think obviously we are all aware of the reasons why everything's increasing. But in, in terms of, and compared to the rest of the world, I think the increases were minimal and Machios has put out a quality meal for the kids.
I'll call attention to is number 12. We finished our first year with the Bush Law Group. They've been great. So number 12 is on there to approve the retainer agreement for the next year.
Number 11, do we know when the state's going to decide if they're going to subsidize reduced?
The state or the reduced portion of it?
Yeah.
As of right now, no news is good news.
Okay.
That's what Machios and I are, are pretty much leaning on.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar.
Yes.
Mr. Pico.
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam.
Yes.
Mrs. Harold.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein.
Motion's carried.
All right, next section is annual adoptions and appointments, items one through 26. Can I have a motion, please? Second, please? So again, we do these every year. I don't think there's anything new on this list, not when I read it earlier. But I'll give everybody a minute and then if there's questions. Nope. Okay, hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iftikhar. Mr. Pico.
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam.
Yes.
Mrs. Harold.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
We have a, or, motion's carried.
Thank you. Any new business to bring before the board? Anybody want to discuss anything new?
Yes, you know, we briefly spoke about it in committee. Just kind of want to go, you know, speak about it in front of you guys. Some parents brought up concerns about possibility of changing recess next year. They're just exploring the idea after speaking to Mr. Hagman. It makes sense why they're thinking about maybe doing away with the recess for, I believe, seventh and eighth grade. Just middle school.
So, so just real quick, and I don't mean to cut you off. Recession is mandated kindergarten through fifth grade, 20 minutes of recess daily, which is something that we have and will continue to offer. We are discussing the possibility of either eliminating recess at the middle school level or possibly offering a student choice as to whether or not they want to go outside for recess period or potentially engage in, in something else during that time. So we're just finalizing schedules for next year.
Yeah, just rumors can spread and it's a long summer, so I just want to just kind of bring that out there and give them an opportunity to say exactly that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, schedules are, are not final for next year, but.
I think too, one, one of the things that it's difficult for, for some people to understand if they really only know the, the school setting in a small town like this. You know, most standalone middle schools in larger districts, they don't offer recess for students. It's, it's just not something that's considered widely middle school appropriate. It's, it's just not something that's considered widely middle school appropriate. We've always had it here because we're an elementary school and the way that the schedule breaks out, you know, we need somewhere for the kids to go during that time. So although no decision is final, what I will, will definitely say is we are, no matter what, abiding by the state law and our kids are active and, and we try to get them moving as often as we can.
If you eliminate it, what would those students do during that period?
So it could be like a study hall opportunity to meet with teachers. If we give them an option, it could be opportunity to complete homework, to stay inside and ultimately socialize with their peers. You know, honestly, a good, for the majority of the school year, weather isn't ideal going outside and most of our middle school kids prefer to stay inside when it's 35 degrees or when it's misting or when there's snow on the ground. So we're just trying to do the best that we can to, to accommodate our students, keep them safe. You know, but make sure that they're getting everything that they need here in school.
Is there any chance if any of those students need extra help that they could get it from somewhere?
Those are, those are things that we're, we're exploring. We currently have opportunities like that in our schedule now. And yeah, we're, we're trying to work through some of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it also comes with, and I'll just say, especially at middle school, right? In the younger grades, they want to eat fast. They want to get outside and play. In the older grades, they take their time to eat and they want to sit and they want to talk. So many of them don't even finish their lunch because they're rushed outside. 20 minutes lunch, 20 minutes outside. You know, at that age, they prefer to sit, they prefer to talk, they prefer to eat their lunch with their friends and hang out more than just go outside to, to recess. So we're just trying to balance that middle school environment as well.
We actually had a hybrid when I went to Valley. Like you could eat lunch staying here or they would open the door and go play back there. It was, it was more of a choice for us. You know what I mean? So I got to experience it and it was better for me, frankly, so.
I think that's a good idea because back in the day when I was little, we didn't, seventh and eighth grade, we didn't have any.
Yeah, it's not required. We didn't.
No recess. We didn't have.
It's all new things, huh? It's all new things. Recess, you're mandated and stuff like that.
Yep.
That was a different world then.
All right, well, thank you. Any other new business? Any old business?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to thank the HSA and especially Mr. Velardo. The 5K Charger Run took place at the end of May. Rain or shine, and it rained. It rained like I have not seen rain before, but the amount of time and energy Matt put into this was impressive. I mean, I got to walk the trail with him. I saw what he did. It was thoughtful. Safety came first. The turnout was excellent. The administration came and HSA does everything great. You know what I mean? It was organized. I'm excited for next year. I hope it keeps going. More participation, but Matt specifically owes, you know, I owe him a great gratitude, like the families that went loved it. You know, and it was a challenging course and it was my first time really going back there and I see the appeal that he always talks about. And he even renamed a hill Mr. Hagman's Hill and everyone hated it. So that was fun. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you.
Spitting name for a torturous hill.
You should, I got to see them come down because that's where my spot was and they're all miserable. It was great. But uh, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to HSA.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad it happened. I know he was wanting that for a long time. I'm glad we made use of the space.
Can I jump back to what I think is new business real quick? I just wanted to offer heartfelt condolences to the Conken family. You know, with the passing of Mrs. Diana Conken. She is, she has been one of our school district's greatest supporters since I've been here 11 years. She's attended yearly our Veterans Day program as a town council member. She's come in and she's read to our students. She's been a guest reader. Just a wonderful human being, wonderful family. And, and in fact, she was actually supposed to come to the, to the 5K to support us. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to see her there. But just wanted to, to offer condolences to a wonderful family. She will be missed. And obviously a lot of the great things that happened and that have happened in this town are partially responsible or partially her responsibility.
Thank you. All right, that would bring us to public session number two. No public has joined us, so that would bring us to adjournment. Can I have a motion, please? Second, please?
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? Good to go. Thank you.